Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five West Fargo City Commission Meeting. Before we begin, could you please silence your cellphones? Everyone except first responders? And with that, please join the commission in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the elaborate word which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Here.
Commissioner Zandell.
Here.
Commissioner Dardis.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Let the record show all commissioners are present. Item D is to approve the order of the agenda. Commissioners, it has been distributed and in your packets.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Jorgensen moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve the order of the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, approval of the minutes of May fifth, twenty twenty-five. Again, commissioners, they have been distributed and are in your packets.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve the May fifth minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zandell, seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve the May fifth minutes as distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F is the building permits. The building permit report has been distributed and in your packets.
I make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Zandell moves to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, second. I have a motion and a second on the building permit as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have items A through G.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve the consent agenda, items A through G. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jorgensen, seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now moving into the regular agenda. The first order of business is public comment. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
I did not receive anything.
All right. Item number one is closed on the regular agenda, and we move to item number two. Item number two is for public hearings, and the first discussion will be on the Renaissance Zone Program Extension. We're going to call on Casey Sanders Burgland, the Director of Economic Development, for this presentation. After her presentation and questions by the commission, we will gavel out of the regular agenda and go into a public hearing and allow the public to speak on this. Good evening, Ms. Burgland. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, present commissioners. Tonight, I have the opportunity to share with you about the Renaissance Zone Program and our opportunity to extend that. So, as presented on the March third, twenty twenty-three, excuse me, twenty twenty-five City Commission Meeting, this commission approved to move forward and start the process of exploring what the extension would look like for us. And just to give a little bit of a recap, the intent of this program is to support investment in both residential and commercial properties that fall within this eligible zone. The reinvestment also needs to support all the guidelines set forth for the program and support the city's overall goals around increasing public safety, increasing property values, diversifying the local economy, business attraction and retention, and creating and supporting high-quality jobs. Those are specifically called out within this plan. Encouraging the enhancement of major thoroughfares, as well as the demolition and reconstruction of existing structures, is also laid out as part of this plan. The City of West Fargo supported it in one of the last projects that it approved in twenty twenty-four. If you recall, our last, one of the projects that I'd call out is, that was approved through Renaissance Zone, was Northwest Tires on Main Avenue. We used the Renaissance Zone to demolish their existing facility, and if you drive by, it's kitty-corner to where Bonanzaville sits, and they currently have provided a building that's about six times the value. Strengthening the local housing stock by rehabilitation efforts, additions to existing residences, or demolishing inhitable structures to pave the way for construction of new residences are also major goals of this program. So, this request is not for any specific applicant, but to the extension of the current program, which expires in June of twenty twenty-five. This would extend the option for us to use as a tool for abatements of up to five years. You may be familiar with the legislature that was passed at the state of North Dakota that we could request abatements up to eight years. However, feedback collected from businesses from the past that have used this program, EDAC members and conversations throughout businesses, I'm bringing forward today that we do not make that change in this program, that we leave our guidelines as is, as up to five years, and make no changes to those thresholds or eligibility requirements, and that we maintain those standards. In addition, the updated map is being provided for you. There is no change in the current Renaissance Zone Blocks, one through thirty-three. Those Renaissance Zone Blocks, that decision-making kind of process, essentially myself and city assessors sat down and looked through all of the properties that use the Renaissance Zone and looked at the opportunities that still lie within each and every parcel, as well as the guidelines of needing to remain continuous and have all of the zones connected, or all of the blocks within the zones connected. So, my recommendation is to continue with all of the Renaissance Blocks that we have currently. However, I would like to propose that we add Blocks thirty-three through forty, as this is the time in which we can add or remove blocks in this program, is only during the time of extension. So, the zoned blocks that I'm proposing include both residential and commercial properties, with the majority of those blocks being designated in normal or below-average conditions. So, approximately forty percent of those properties are rated through the city assessor's office as normal or below-normal and average. We would target, however, in the plan, it outlines that we would target those properties that are noted as poor condition first and have conversations with those owners sooner rather than later. This is a public hearing, so I will stand for questions, but I'd like to allow for the public hearing.
Commissioner Olson.
Can you bring up the map up on the screen?
Yes. For any, is it working? For anyone else that's looking on here, it's page two of the plan.
So, what is the red versus the blue designation?
Oh, great question. The red is designated parcels that have actively used or have used the Renaissance Zone in the past. So, they are ineligible to reuse that. Once a property or parcel has used it, they cannot apply for and use this incentive again.
So, follow-up question. Where would Blocks thirty-four through forty be?
Sure.
Are they designated in blue, or are they a different?
They are designated in blue, and I can put my cursor over them. If you can see here, I can't see what numbers they are, but they're right here.
Okay.
Right in that, oh, thank you.
Oh, that evergreen circle there.
Kind of in that area there. And then there's one essentially across the street.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Commissioners, additional questions? All right, thank you. At this time, we are out of the regular agenda. We are now in the public comment with regard to the extension of the Renaissance Zone Program for the City of West Fargo. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the extension of the Renaissance Zone? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the Renaissance Zone Extension? Okay, now we will go to anyone that would like to speak against the Renaissance Zone Extension. Is there anyone that would like to speak against West Fargo extending its Renaissance Program? Is there anyone that would like to speak against? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. We are now back in the regular agenda. Commissioners, item number two is an actionable item.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Zandell moves to approve the Renaissance Zone Program Extension as presented by Casey Sanders Burgland on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. She did call out a number of different caveats to this, that we're going to stay with the same program that we've had, rather than the changes that took place in the legislature. And the additions of some additional blocks of homes, or structures, excuse me.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number three is the approval of a benefits broker contract. We call on Sarah Goshevich, Director of Human Resources. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Commission President and Commissioners. So, after an extensive search and comparison and all of the fun, we have chosen a new benefits broker. We are, the contract in front of you is for the benefits brokerage to be turned over to Marsh McLennan Agency, and tonight I do have a representative, Ben Zietz, with me if you have any questions for them. But my ask is a simple one, that you would sign the contract as it is presented to start on June first, in which case they would start the search for our health and vision and dental benefit plans and start those rate negotiations on our behalf.
Thank you. Could you give us a brief outline as to how the review of a new supplier was done?
Sure.
What departments were involved, all of that, please?
Yes. So, it was determined that we should go for an RFP, given it was our third year of having a benefits broker for the city, and it is a pretty common schedule to do that every three years, that you would have that RFP process. So, we developed the RFP early on in twenty twenty-five, using our benefits coordinator, as well as a few others for input to those things. We sent out the RFP to, I believe it was nine different agencies, and five of them, yes, five of them replied. One of our key qualifiers that we wanted was to have somebody that had a local presence and a local team to help us with our benefits process. So, of those five that had responded, only four of them met that criteria. From there, we did an interview with each one of the brokers, where they came in and did a very short presentation, and then we did some Q and A back and forth for some more specific questions on their RFP proposals that they had given in.
Who on our team was involved?
So, it was the entire HR department, so myself, our two HR generalists, and our benefits broker. We had our senior director, Nick Lee, in there as well, and I believe, I have it all in the notes, but I could not tell you. Nick, do you recall who else was in the meeting? Was it just us? Okay, so, it was the five of us talking back and forth with them about, again, benefits.
Thank you. Commissioner Zandell.
Yes. On page seven of this document, I heard you say June first. The document says May first.
Your copy of the document says May first. The one I sent over to Emily earlier this morning was the original one I'd gotten this morning. Since then, I've had him updated to say June first. So, the copy that I have here for signature is June first. Sorry about that.
Any additional questions? So, this is a three-year contract?
Say it again.
This would be for three years?
It's just a rolling contract. We would do the RFP process again in three years. There would be no need to terminate this contract and reassign one should Marsh be selected as the broker again, so we don't really look at it as a three-year contract, but yes. That's the idea.
Any additional questions? Yes, where does it define the cost?
So, the cost for our brokers is actually built into our premiums, and so they get a percentage of those rates, depending on who the contract goes with. We don't actually pay them directly for anything.
Anyone else?
I make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Zandell moves to approve the benefits broker contract as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the benefits broker contract with Marsh McLennan.
Starting on June first.
Starting on June first. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number five, Park District would like the commission approval to pursue and enter into a contract for human resources slash payroll services. Again, we call on Sarah, Director of Human Resources, for this item.
So, tonight, what we are seeking out is the commission's approval or permission, if you will, to start processing on a contract between the West Fargo Park District and the City of West Fargo. In your packets tonight, I gave you a little timeline as to how did I end up standing here right now, and the basic premise is, the Park District used to be a part of the city. They became a separate entity, but they had always remained on our benefits, and through our own benefit selection processes with our previous broker, well, now our previous broker, we discovered that they were still on our benefits. And so, we were trying to make some different choices for vendors for certain benefits for the employees, and found that we were unable to do so without fully removing the Park District from our benefits, because of the data files, and that our vendors would only accept a single data file and not multiple data files. So, we couldn't send one, and the Park District sent one. They all wanted it to be all one if it was all for one contract. And so, if we were to cut the Park District off from our programs, they would see a significant spike to their employees and to the Park District itself for their health insurances and those costs, because they would no longer be considered a large employer, which we are, and so, by keeping them on, they are able to access those prices. We would still like to be able to have the ability to negotiate for different vendors and things of that sort. So, we started talking with the Park District last summer/fall timeframe around open enrollment, and tried to come up with the feasibility of what if we did their HR and payroll? Currently, the Park District does outsource payroll and HR services to Pro Resources, right? Okay. And so, basically, we would become their new Pro Resources. This allows them to stay on our benefits and therefore utilizing that better cost for them, but also, again, gives us the ability to make those decisions and changes as needed. With our new broker coming on, you know, Ben would like to know if he's including everybody or just us, and so, we are looking to enter into a contract with them in which they would pay the equivalent of one FTE for staffing to provide the services that their employees will need, and obviously, we will provide the payroll processing and the HR processing.
So, that's the only fiscal note coming to the City of West Fargo is, will be the, they will pay for the full-time FTE to support that?
Mm-hmm.
And FTEs benefits, I'm assuming?
FTE. It will be a single FTE, but we're saying the equivalent of, because it's not going to be a specific, this is the West Fargo's person. Those services would be broken across, because some of it falls into payroll, some of it is in the HR side of things, yes. But that is the only cost to us. There would be a rolling, if you will, cost and payment cycle, because we would invoice them for their payroll portion, for their benefits, for their payroll, all of that. We would invoice them, and then they would, of course, send those funds over to us to make that payment, and then so on and so forth, every two weeks, back and forth.
Very good. Commissioner Olson.
So, back on the FTE, we won't see an extra body in the building?
No, there will be an extra body in the building. What I am simply stating is that, let's say, for example, that we were going to have them be, whatever this new FTE would be, is a grade twelve, just putting one out there. Whatever that grade twelve step A cost is, that is what we would charge to the Park District, but that person would not be just for the Park District, if that makes sense. Yeah.
Anyone else? I guess. Commissioner Jorgensen.
So, does the Park Department have somebody in mind to step into this position, or would it take a hiring?
We would hire. Yep, we would hire.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Olson.
How about when there comes the need of new software package to process payroll or HR, would the Park District share in that?
Yes.
Because they've got a bunch of employees, too.
So, we actually are already in a contract with our current HRIS system for five years. We're on year two of it soon, and so, we have a few more years. That is a negotiated and flat-for-five-years rate, so even having the Park District add-on with us right now won't change our cost at all. When the time comes that we need to renew that, and we get those new renewal fees, then we would look at them taking on, ratio-wise, their portion of that.
Would the same hold true for payroll software?
I don't know on that particular piece. That's part of what we need to figure out in the contract side.
So, what you're asking is just for us to be able to enter into a contract? Nothing's been decided yet. Okay.
No, we did, so far, we've reached the point where we've checked, is it feasible? Can we do it with our current software, with our current processes, things like that? What came out of it is, we can't do it with our current staff, so we do need for them to pay for that, but we can do it through our software systems and things like that. Now that we know it's feasible, we want commission's permission to move forward and try to make it happen, for lack of a better term.
Any else?
So, is this an actionable item?
Yes, it is.
I'll make the motion to start the paperwork rolling.
Commissioner Jorgensen moves for the approval to enter into a contract for HR and payroll services with the West Fargo Parks District. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. I have a motion and a second for the approval of the contract for HR and payroll in conjunction with the City of West Fargo and the West Fargo Parks District. Is there any further discussion?
Just the point of.
Commissioner Olson.
That we're going to work on a contract. We're not, we haven't developed a contract yet, so we're just going to work on the contract. We're going to give the staff.
They have approval to pursue.
Okay.
Commissioner Zandell.
And then I will obviously abstain.
Commissioner Zandell is recusing herself. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second for approval to pursue a discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Let the record show it as a four, zero, one, one abstention. Item number five. Thank you, Sarah. Item number five is a Public Works Annual Report. We call on Mr. Matt Anvik, Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Commission President and Commissioners.
May I interrupt you, please?
Sure.
First and foremost, congratulations to you, and I would assume communications, on a great annual report. Congratulations. Very well done. Please continue.
Yeah, no, our staff did a wonderful job on that, and that's kind of a, I guess, a great segue, I get to go into this. This is something that's been kind of my, back of my mind for a few years to do this. Fire and PD does such a good job with their annual reports, so it's like, this would be something really good to get the information out for the public to see kind of what we do, just for the, a lot of the bigger fact it is, when most people think about Public Works, they don't think about Public Works until something goes wrong. If they hit a pothole, or their water doesn't turn on, or their garbage, you can pick up that ceiling time, you're really gonna, most people really think about them. So, being able to put something like this out in front of everybody, to get a little bit more of an idea of what we actually do, I think is a good thing to do. Just trying to keep it brief, but hitting some more reviews, and this page, I think, kind of says it all. For Public Works, it's eight divisions but one team, and that's really how we kind of see ourselves out there, is one team, especially when you see, like, clean up a week, a couple weeks ago, any kind of snow event, or, you know, any storms that come through, all of those divisions help each other out, you know, if there's a big project, and really cross-train and just dive right in and help whoever needs help with. So, that's kind of how we treat that. Just some of the highlights is that we have ninety full-time employees with fourteen seasonal. We had an overall budget for Public Works last year of about twenty-six point seven million. Street Department, they have four hundred lane miles to, and I'm just going back and forth, there you go. I'll leave it. They had about four, surprisingly enough, they did four hundred and forty-two tons of debris from street sweeping on their roads last year, and that was even with one of our street sweepers down for quite some time. And they had four thousand tons of asphalt they used to repair the streets. Road right away, we have over five hundred acres to mow, and they have fifty-five miles of sidewalk or bike path to maintain. Last year, we pumped nine hundred and thirty million gallons of sewage over to Fargo, and two hundred and sixty million of that went to our lagoons as well. They have a hundred and eighty-four miles of sanitary sewer to maintain and two hundred and five miles of storm sewer to maintain for water. As a city, we used one point three billion gallons that we purchased from Fargo. For fleet facilities, they have worked on over five hundred and fifty-seven pieces of equipment this last year, and our facilities guys did a phenomenal job last year with the move to the new city hall over here, and then helping with PD move into their space as well. Our streetlights, we have over five thousand streetlights to maintain in town, and thirty-two traffic signals. Forestry, they, last year, twenty twenty-four, was our fortieth year of being a Tree City USA, and we have ten community orchards now within the city. Sanitation, we did over almost twenty-five thousand tons of waste that we disposed of, and one big number that we had was, we had over fifteen thousand visits to our transportation from the residence. I just really can't say enough of the job that Kristin, Danielle, Logan, and Eddie did on this report. They really dove into it and did a lot of legwork, getting all the numbers and the information and the pictures put together to bring this forward. Hopefully, that's something where you continue to go on every year, and now we can actually have some numbers to kind of go back and compare from year to year on that. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions from Mr. Anvik.
Very well done.
Very well done.
Yep.
Very well done.
Congrats. Good job.
Please congratulate the team members that are also involved. No questions for Mr. Anvik? This is not an actionable item. It, it's just a, a report on what, what transpired last year. So, thank you, Mr. Anvik.
And one thing I did forget to mention that we brought it forward this week because it is Public Works Week this week, May 18 through the 24th.
That's my cue. Good job. We have a mayoral proclamation for National Public Works Week, May 18 through the 24th, 2025, whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustain and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of West Fargo. And whereas this, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of Public Works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and after, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of West Fargo to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and the Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Therefore, be it resolved, I, Bernie Dartis, Mayor of the, of West Fargo, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim May 18 through the 24th, 2025, as Public Works Week in the city of West Fargo, and encourage all residents to recognize the substantial contributions our Public Works employees make to protecting our health, safety, and advancing a quality of life for all. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Please pass that on to your team. Item number six on the agenda is project number 2279, Ninth Street East Veterans Boulevard pedestrian safety improvements. We're going to call on Dan Hanson, the city engineer. The purpose of this discussion is to approve a task order with Bolton and Mink. Mr. Hanson, good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner, President, Dartis, and Commissioners. This is a project that we've already went out to bid. We've awarded it to a contractor, and this is to approve a task order with Bolton and Mink for them to provide the construction observation and admin, and in construction administration of this project. Just a little bit of the financial information on it is there, we did get a grant for 90% of the construction of the project, and we do have an MOU with the city of Fargo, who's cost participating in all the soft costs, which would include the costs that is in Bolton and Mink's contract tonight, so. With that, I'd stand for questions.
Questions for Mr. Hanson?
Move to approve.
Mr. Olson moves to approve project number 2279. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, second. Again, it's been moved and seconded to approve project number 2279, the pedestrian safety improvements, Ninth Street East and Veterans Boulevard. This is to approve a task order with Bolton and Mink. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number seven is the Improvement District 2294. It's Sixth, Sixth Street and 23rd Avenue East intersection improvements. Again, we call on Dan Hanson, city engineer. The purpose of the discussion is to authorize a resolution of necessity and approve a task order with Bolton and Mink. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you again, Commissioner, President, Dartis, and Commissioners. This is a project that, if you recall, we discussed whether this was going to be a roundabout or a signal project, and the commission ordered staff to proceed with the option of the installation of a signal. After we got that moving, I did request a task order from Bolton and Mink. They were the ones that did the corridor study and also the feasibility study for the project, so they're in, they're already a part of this project, so. The task order would be to move forward to design, and then also, as this is intended to be an assessed project, we wanted to pass this resolution of necessity, or authorize this resolution of necessity for the project. What that does is it's, it allows us to advertise it, send out notices, and that would set up a hearing of protests to be conducted at the July 7th meeting, just to follow the, the special assessment process for the project. So, again, with that, I would entertain questions.
Questions for Mr. Hanson?
I move to authorize a resolution of necessity and approve the task order with Bolton and Mink.
I have a motion. Is there a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Zandell, seconds. Commissioner Olson made the motion for Improvement District 2294 to authorize a resolution of necessity and approve the task order with Bolton and Mink. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number eight is Improvement District number 2290, 2025 Public Works Mill and Overlay Project. Again, we call on Mr. Dan Hanson, the city engineer. Purpose of the discussion is to accept the bid and award the contract. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Commissioner, President, Dartis, and Commissioners. This is a project that we've already bid out once, but at a recent commission meeting, we rejected all bids and authorized to move forward to rebid the project. The first time that we had bid the project, we were under the understanding, as our trucks need to go pick up the asphalt for the Mill and Overlay Project, that we couldn't venture into Minnesota. It was later discovered by our fleet services that we did have the ability to travel up to 20 miles into Minnesota, so that opened up other bidders for the potential to win the project. So, we did rebid the project, and we opened up bids on May 15th, and Border States Paving as the lowest bidder, and the amount of $708,050.39. That was underneath our engineer's estimate and, which obviously lessens the cost of the project and the special assessments associated with it. So, with that, we would be looking to accept the bid and award the contract to Border States Paving.
Commissioners?
I'll move that we accept the bid and award the contract.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, for the motion. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zandell, seconds. Been moved and seconded to, to approve, accept the bid and award the contract for improvement district number 2290 for $708,050.39. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number nine is A Street West Multi-Use Path. Again, Mr. Dan Hanson, the city engineer. Purpose of the discussion is to create a project number 6063, direct and approve the engineer's report, direct the engineer to prepare plans and specifications, and approve a letter of agreement. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Commissioner, President, Dartis, and Commissioners. Just a little bit of a history on the funds with this project. Originally, the city of West Fargo was granted some funds to purchase electric vehicles. If you remember me talking about that over the course of about the last year and a half, eventually, that project was terminated. We were no longer allowed to purchase electric vehicles with those funds, which left the funds still available. The funds were, basically, we went through MetroCog to select projects. The city of West Fargo did have this project that's in front of you tonight, the Eighth Street West Multi-Use Path project. We did have that as an identified project, and it was on our list of projects that we had submitted to be able to be funded, and they were nice enough to take the funds that we had already had designated towards the purchase of the electric vehicles and reallocate them towards this project. And not only that, there was an additional, there were some other projects that had bid in under the estimates, which freed up some additional funds to be able to be put towards this project. And this is a very good project. There are some bed ramps along the corridor that are out of compliance for current ADA design standards that are going to get cleaned up and reconstructed with this project. And in addition, this is an asphalt sidewalk, basically, along that corridor that goes right past a, a school that is in need of repair. So, we were lucky to have already had this project on the list and be a very important project in the continuity of our concrete sidewalks. And so, with that, we are bringing this forward to create the project and all of the things listed in the action items, and we would look for that approval tonight, and I would entertain any questions.
Questions for Mr. Hanson?
I motion to approve.
Commissioner Jorgensen moves to approve and create the project 6063. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, seconds. I have a motion and a second to create project number 6063, and that's to direct the engineers, uh, direct and approve the engineer's report, direct the engineer to prepare plans and specifications, and approve a letter of an agreement for a multi-use path on A Street West. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 10. Purpose of this discussion is the appointment of Mr. Jerry Wallace as the city engineer. We're going to call on Mr. Dan Hanson, Senior Director of Community and Developmental Services. That's, that's interesting how that changed so quickly from one line to the next. So, Mr. Hanson, please.
Thank you so much. This, this is more of a fun one for me to bring in front of you. Jerry has been part of the engineering team here for a number of years predating me. He was here when Dustin was the city engineer, and he's just been a rock and a foundation of the engineering department, extremely hard worker, moral compass that points straight north. Anytime you ask him, behind closed doors or in front of people, he's the, he's the same person in and out. So, he has been somebody that I've went to when I came on board for information. It's amazing the amount of knowledge that he has of our existing system and things of that nature. He's got a technical knowledge that is, is also very well. Unfortunately, he's also in charge of all of our construction that's taking place this summer, so it's going to be a bit of a weaning process for myself to disengage and for Jerry to come on board because our next step would be to hopefully replace him to take away some of that workload and give him the opportunity to step fully into the duties of this. But in the meantime, we would be, we would be tag-teaming this and moving towards him being able to have the time to, to put forth all the commitment that's necessary for this position, but I can't, we, we did the interview, and I am very honored to introduce Jerry Wallace, and I would highly recommend that we would appoint him as our next city engineer.
Thank you. Commissioners, we do appoint on this, so the recommendation is to appoint Jerry Wallace as the new city engineer.
I'll move to appoint Jerry Wallace as the new city engineer.
Commissioner Anderson moves to approve Jerry Wallace as the new city engineer. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jorgensen, seconds. We have a motion and a second to appoint Jerry Wallace as the new city engineer. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Hanson, would you invite Mr. Wallace to the podium?
I was just about to ask if I can have Jerry come up here and introduce himself.
Bring him on up and so we can.
Mr. Commission President, Commissioners, I'd just like to say it's truly an honor and a privilege to get this appointment. I very much appreciate it. I'll try to do everything I can to, you know, keep your confidence in me moving forward here. Dan, I'd just like to say thank you very much for the kind words. Truly appreciated. Just a little bit about myself, I, I think some of you know me, a couple of you maybe not so much, but I, just a little bit about myself, I was a transplant to this city. I've been living here about 15 years now. Excuse me. Decided to raise my family here. You know, I've been in the National Guard now 17 years, truly passionate about the community and, and serving and giving back. You know, a little bit about my professional life before here. Before here, I was actually an employee with Houston Engineering, worked there for about eight years before taking Dustin up with the opportunity to come over and join the team here. Been here with the city now about six years, and, you know, like I said, it's something I'm truly passionate about, trying to do the right thing for the city and its residents and its businesses. I'll do everything I can in my power, you know, to, you know, do what I think you would think is right, and please don't hesitate at all to use me as a resource moving forward so that you can make informed decisions on city business. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you not only for the service to our community, but to our country and the National Guard. Item number 11 is an ordinance regard, 1256 relating to the storage locker habitation. We're going to call on Katie Schmidt, our legal representative, representative from Onsted-Twitchell. Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you, Commissioner, President, Dartis, and Commissioners. This is a first reading of this ordinance tonight, and its purpose is to establish limitations on the ability to reside or sleep in buildings, vehicles, or temporary structures that are not designed for residential occupancy. The request for the ordinance arose from Commissioner Olson, following an identification of the limited ability of the police department to address, to address individuals habitating in these areas. The ordinance defines the prohibited behavior, the prohibited behavior, and sets the penalty as a Class B misdemeanor. Again, this is a first reading, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Commissioners, questions?
Just a comment.
Please, Commissioner Olson.
This arose from a business owner watching people come and go from a mini storage unit next to their business. They could tell that they were sleeping in there, running cords in there somehow and all that, so we've been working back and forth to get this ordinance to this point.
Thank you. This is a first reading, and it is an actionable item to approve the first reading.
Moving.
Commissioner Zandell moves that we approve the ordinance 1256, first reading for a storage locker habitation. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, seconds. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number 12 is a closed executive session pursuant to North Dakota Sentry Code 44-04-18.4 and 5 for the purpose of discussing an economic development records in Information Room. At this time, the commission and selected individuals that have pertinent information, we will gavel out, we will exit to the West Fargo room, and then we will return upon that meeting. The regular agenda is now closed. We are in executive session.
At seven ten on May nineteenth, twenty twenty five, the West Fargo City Commission is reconvening the city commission meeting. We are back in session. Mr. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Commission President Dardis and commissioners. This evening we'd be looking for a motion to authorize staff to pursue negotiations regarding an economic development project.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Commissioners?
I make the motion to direct staff to move forward with the proposed economic development.
Mr. Jorgensen moves. Commissioner Olson seconds. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say to five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number thirteen, Mr. Scott, city administrators' report.
Thank you again, Commission President Dardis and commissioners. I'll begin my update here this evening with our utility billing software. Our finance team and Nick back there have been tirelessly at work, working very hard this past week and a half to get our software conversion complete. We are in the final phases. We hope to have all of the online portal information working yet this week. There was a lot of ACH payment processing last week. Very proud of our team for working, again, very hard to get all of that done and make it as seamless for our residents as possible. So, again, we are at the very end of that conversion process and hope to wrap things up yet this week. Any questions on our utility billing software?
Commissioners, questions?
Okay, a brief update on our budget process. All of our departmental budgets are in. We are working to compile everything as well as starting to hone in on our revenue projections for twenty twenty six. So, we are getting to the point where we would be ready to review with each commissioner. We're hoping to schedule meetings as early as next week after Memorial Day, possibly into the week of June second. So, everything is going fairly well in terms of getting everything compiled, and we are excited to start sharing that information with commissioners and getting initial feedback. And as a reminder, we are going to present that at our June sixteenth meeting, just our first draft of the budget. So, a lot of hard work being put in on that and looking forward to bringing that forward much earlier this year than we have in the last two. So, any questions on our budget process?
Commissioners?
Okay, and speaking of Memorial Day, goes without saying, but all city offices and buildings are closed on Memorial Day. So, of course, our emergency services will be working, but all city buildings and the library are going to be closed Monday, the twenty sixth. And then last, our growth area master plan. We have an open house scheduled for Wednesday evening from five to seven. So, we are excited to get the public feedback and involvement. That is a very important endeavor. We are excited to start putting the pieces of a puzzle together and how we're going to plan for growing our community. As we all know, the FM diversion is nearing its completion. So, this is a very critical project, and we are, again, excited to get the public in here Wednesday evening to start getting their thoughts and ideas. Any questions on the growth area master plan? Okay, that's all I have for you this evening. I will stand for any other questions you have for me.
Questions for Mr. Scott? Commissioners, anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
All correspondence has been directed to your mailboxes, commissioners. So, anything that came in is in your boxes. Does any commissioner have a non-agenda item that they'd like to bring up this evening? Any department head have anything for us?